The views and opinions expressed in the following program are those of the participants and do not necessarily reflect those of KSMQ Public Service Media Incorporated or its
Welcome to the Literature and Literacy Regional Town Hall Special as a part of KSMQ's Cities on the Move series. Tonight, we're talking about books and reading and writing. I'm your host, Stephanie Passingham. Stay tuned for an entertaining discussion coming up on Cities on the Move. Tonight, we'll be discussing what people are reading and writing, why these activities are compelling social draws, and what some of our guests are recommending for your summer reading list. Please welcome our special guests: Cheryl Barlow, author and self-publisher; Carolyn Brastead, book club member; Christine Peterson, managing editor at Capstone Publishing; Roger Panzer from the Washington Avenue Writers Club; and Ann Hochenson from the Austin Public Library. Thank you all for being here. We'd also like to welcome members of our at-home audience to join us anytime by making a comment or asking a question either by phone or email. The phone number is 1-877-469-5767, or ask@ksmq.org. We're going to open our discussion this evening with a brief introduction. Let's start right here.
... literature at an all-time low. While overall numbers have increased from 95.6 million in 1982 to 96.2 million in 2004, the numbers aren't keeping up with population growth. Within that demographic, the number of women are increasing, and the number of men who read are declining. And despite the popularity of Harry Potter and book series like The Goosebumps, the percentage of young people reading for fun has also declined. Those involved in actually writing literature have declined by 2.2 million. And it isn't about whether or not people can read. According to the National Assessment of Adult Literacy, basic literacy rates have remained fairly stable since 1993. There is much speculation that television and the Internet have had an impact on the reading of literature. The NEA has posed the following questions for further review: How does literature, particularly serious literary work, compete with the Internet, popular entertainment, and other increased demands on leisure time? How do parents, communities, schools, and the education system respond to illiteracy and aliteracy? Have changes in the ways publishers choose and market books had any effect on literature participation? If education levels are the surest predictor of literature participation, what can be done to increase the reading level by less educated adults? What factors are at work in the decline in reading literary works among people ages 18 to 45? Are we losing a generation of readers? What do you think?
So, lots of possibilities out there, and a lot for us to discuss. So Christine, let's start with you. Tell us what you think might be some of the reasons why the general percentage isn't keeping up as the population grows. Why aren't people reading as much?
Despite the statistics, book clubs-
Well, I think there are a lot of reasons for that. I think, number one, there are digitalized demands on people's times today between work and activities, especially, you know, the advent of social media certainly, I think, plays into it. We are spending a great deal more time digitally than we are with the written word. I do think that there's also a percentage of the population that reading is still a frustration. And I think that both applies to youth and adults, and we see a lot of that in my business. And if reading is a frustration, you're not going to look for it for pleasure. So that's one of the reasons.
Carolyn, you've been reading for a long time. What prompted you to get interested in reading and still be excited about it today?
I've been reading ever since I can remember. My greatest thrill was going to the library. I know one of the nicest compliments I ever had was from a friend of mine when we had our last reunion, who reminded me that she read, and she has her doctorate now, but she didn't used to like to read. But we would make a deal. She'd go to the library with me, and I would pick out books I thought she'd like, and at the same time, I'd then go swimming with her at the Y. So, it worked out well for both of us.
A good trade.
I continued to read. Reading is, I would much rather do that than anything else.
And do you see that on the local level as well? Do you see some of those national trends of people not reading as much? Or are you still handing out plenty of library cards?
We hand out a lot of library cards, and a lot of people have library cards. But they come to the library now not just for books, but also other media. They're listening to books, they're watching movies. That's another way that people get that social connection, that social media that we're talking about so much. They use the Internet. All of that can be done at the library. But popular culture ties are, I think, increasingly important to people. People want to be up on the major things that people are talking about, the big blockbusters. And we see a lot of demand still for blockbuster titles, blockbuster shows. And a little less demand, I think, for people reading outside of that main group, core group of titles and interests. One of the things that I've noticed is that people, when they come into the library, self-identify as readers or not readers. We get a lot of people coming into the library that say, you know, "I'm not really a reader." And they're needing something, but that they identify themselves that way.
All right. Cheryl, you've worked in other media outlets as well that perhaps provide some of that competition to book lovers, but yet you are an author and you love books. What's your take on the trends in reading and what people are picking up these days?
Oh, I blame it on the media. I think that people nowadays have a much shorter attention span because they can get their information in short quips, you know, in small paragraphs. And just the competition for your time, you know, how much time do people spend on Facebook nowadays? That cuts into your reading time. So I think a longer format book is a much more, bigger time commitment, and people aren't willing to do that.
Roger, you're our token male tonight. What do you think?
Well, looking at my grandkids and seeing what they do, they have a lot of sports involvement. My grandson is involved with hockey, and that takes a lot of time. My granddaughter is involved with cheerleading, which takes an awful lot, a big commitment there. Their parents, my daughter-in-law and son-in-law, do encourage them to read and actually make them, shouldn't say really make them, but encourage them to take a certain amount of time to read. And I would agree that the Internet probably takes a lot away from everybody. It's an easy source to go to to find out information. And if you ever, when you're watching TV, not only do they give you the video of it, but you also got text scrolling across there telling you numerous things, and so it's, you almost have to multitask to get some of that information.
Sure, sure. And the Internet is amazing, too. You know, we used to go to encyclopedias. I have an old set in my parents' house. But those get outdated so quickly.
Right.
And Internet is, although not always true. They have a lot of information.
Encyclopedias weren't always true either.
All right, all right. Now Cheryl, you brought along with you an interesting trend item that I would love for you to share with folks because people who are reading, a lot of times, are reading in a new way. Tell us about that latest trend and what you have there.
Yeah, what I have here is a Kindle. It's an e-reader, and there's many versions of this. This is a Kindle, and it's two years old, so it's probably way outdated by now. But it is a way to download books, get books very quickly in our impatient age, get them at a particular price, and it can store 2,500 books. So, you know, it fits a need for people. If they travel a lot, carry 2,500 books with you, you know, in one shot. But it's got its downfalls, too, of course. You know, I read business books, and business books often are formatted with graphs, and they have text laid out differently, and that doesn't really work on a device like this. But just for fun reading, I think it's great.
Do you see that, Ann? Do you see that trend that people are looking to electronic reading rather than paper?
I see that among younger people. We see a real difference, I think, between ages of people when they come in looking for information, the format that they prefer it in. If they come in asking for a book, or a website, or some, an audiobook, kind of based on what they're doing in their age, and that's really the format they want it in. It's hard to switch them over to a different format.
All right. Christine, part of your work at Capstone, you publish children's books, and so you want to get kids interested in reading at an early age. What kind of strategies do you guys use for that? And how has that changed over time?
Well, certainly, we recognize that children are getting their information from different sources, including digital, and that's obviously an area that we are expanding into quite rapidly with online databases for kids, interactive books. I think the biggest thing is that we want to make sure that our books for kids are hitting the topics that they want and that they are interested in, and so that they will read that book and then pick up another and another. And you probably see this at the library as well. If a child is interested in a particular topic, be it monster trucks, or, you know, wizards, or whatever, they will read everything they can find on that topic. And so we try, it's a real focus of our company, to make sure that we're presenting that kind of book for them, and if the text is engaging, and also it's accessible, and they can have success reading. I think that's a key component in building lifelong readers, is early success at that skill. So that's really what we're seeing. We're also seeing the same trends you are for the pop culture. The, I mean, it's really exploding out there, more so than the traditional curriculum topics.
And are there trends in what adults are reading these days? What's popular? We seem to go through cycles of what is most common.
Well, if it's got a vampire in it, it will survive.
All right.
We have a lot of people coming in for the Twilight series. It really took off with a certain population. It was very interesting to see how that worked because it worked up. You know, the Harry Potter books kind of started with a certain age, kind of a upper-middle school, high school level, and kind of worked their way down in the population for interest level. And the vampire books have started with sort of a middle school demographic and have worked their way up. We get lots and lots of moms coming in to read those books because their daughters got them started on them. So it's interesting to see.
Well, I think with the adults, I know, the senior adults, there's a wide variety. I think a common type of book that many of us read for pleasure is mystery, murder mysteries. And then you kind of have a diverge group of people who are either reading romance, perhaps, or historical fiction, or nonfiction. I know quite a few people that like the nonfiction books.
I was surprised. The library and Albert Lee started a nonfiction book club a few years ago, and that seems to be more popular, that folks are getting together around nonfiction rather than the fiction pieces. Roger, tell us a little bit about trends in writing. Now, you are part of a writers' group that reads on a regular basis, and do you see trends on what types of material people are wanting to write?
Well, I've just, I've only been a member of the group since January, and so I haven't been there that long. But it's interesting to listen to what we do is somebody, a person will write a short little, not necessarily a paragraph, maybe a one-page thing about something, and they will read that to the group, and then we kind of comment on that. And last Tuesday night, one lady wrote about, she said, "Saving 20 cents." And so that was her title. And all it was is just about how she bought a lesser expensive bag of sugar, and how when she got it home, it leaked, and she had a mess to clean, so she wrote that about that. Other people write different things. I one time wrote just about coffee, about observations in the mall. So from what I see of the group is that it's varied with things that they write about, and whatever would draw them to think about it. So as I've joined the group, I think about it as I'm driving the car, I think about it all the time, you know, I think about stuff that I could write a short story about.
Does it seem like we're more interested in reading about other people's regular lives? Have you noticed that in the books that are out and the things that people are reading, we seem to be interested in reading people, about people who have lives like ours?
I think if it's, yeah, an ordinary person who really is extraordinary in some way, we all like to read about that because I think we all are. So it's finding that extraordinary story within an ordinary setting. I do think people like to read about that. I do.
I would agree. I think you see that, again, it's a human interest, and they don't have to be a celebrity nonetheless, although we've done our fair share on celebrities associated with vampire books. But I do think there are, people are interested in reading people about others on a similar level and with similar experiences.
I think, too, that they like to, people like to read about people who have extreme diversity in their lives, whether it's a medical problem, and they are able to gain knowledge, they're able to live a better life, become a better person because of that medical problem that has happened in their life. There's a book I haven't read about, I haven't read it, but I've heard that it's a fairly decent book called Still Alice, and it's about a woman who has Alzheimer's, and she is still Alice. So that's where the title comes from.
There have been some other trends that have changed in actually how we end up with books in our hands in the first place. And as a publisher and a self-publisher, I'm going to ask you two gals to comment a little bit on the trends that have changed and how traditional publishing still exists and putting out lots of books, but yet authors who feel like they want to take that into their own hands can do so as well.
Well, at Capstone, you know, we still, Books are still our core product. We do many, many titles each year, and I firmly believe in the value of a book to hold in your hands at any age. So at our company, we do have a more focused view of publishing since we have specific needs with reading levels and content and curriculum. So when we work with an author, say, to get a title published, it's more of a collaborative partnership, and we need to work with the author to make sure that, you know, their talent and expertise is leveraged, but we're also meeting our needs for that product. I think when you self-publish, you have a little more creative control because it's truly your product, but it may take a little longer.
And you don't make as much money. So, yes, and I self-published my book, and the reason I did that was a little bit to do with impatience. And that's a nice thing, you know, 30 years ago, you had to go through a traditional publisher. Or you could go to, you could self-publish, but you had to buy a whole bunch of inventory first. So there was a lot of cost. But now, there's publishing on demand where you can self-publish, it's electronically uploaded, and then as a bookstore orders it, that's when they print it. So that's why you save money. So, yeah, there's a lot of self-publishing companies out there, and they're worth investigating, I think.
Do you think that's encouraged more people to actually finish their book, knowing that they could actually get it in print?
Probably, probably. I mean, there's a reward from writing, but yes, you do want to see it in print eventually. So. And you can digitally publish, too. You know, on the Amazon and Kindle, you can upload your book that way, too, and set your own price, and the author has a lot more controls that way.
So you could go on Amazon, and anyone could order that book, and you don't actually have to put a bit of it to paper?
Right, exactly.
Very interesting.
Yes, a lot of people have gotten their books into a lot of people's hands that way.
Do we see the electronic media as a way to increase readership, or is it simply replacing how they read?
I think it's a little of both. I think it's a little, I don't think it would decrease readership at all, so I think it's a good thing. I think people that look at the electronic mediums probably use both still. They have, you know, printed books, and they use the Kindles and electronic readers.
I think we're seeing a generation that is just more comfortable with getting information digitally. So a product like Kindle may speak to them more so than the actual printed book. And if they're more comfortable reading through an electronic source, be it Kindle, be it a digital interactive book or something like that, then I think that's great, at least then they're reading, you know. So it could affect it, you know, in a positive way.
Do your kids ask for it, or the folks in the classroom, or on that younger end?
It's for a mix. Yep. You know, we just came out last year with a, it's an online database, actually called Pebble Gold, that specifically targets very, very young, pre-K, first grade, second grade students. And it's an online database with curriculum content that they can navigate themselves. And so you're seeing kids being introduced to, you know, digital media at a very young age.
I think, as you, I haven't taught for a while now because I've been retired, but even when I was teaching, and I think that's happening a lot nowadays, that you get the children or the students where you want them to be by using what they use. And even then, we were using a reading program on the computer, and they loved that. But we also had the other aspects of any classroom, you know, one-on-one with maybe phonics or other things they needed to work on. Reading by themselves, listening to a cassette if they had difficulty reading, so they could read along while it read to them. But also, I thought, and I definitely think this is important today, and that's role modeling. If they see their parents, their neighbors, their friends, and in our case, it was teachers, we used to have the students come in, and the first 15 minutes, my associate, myself, and all our students read silently, different books, whatever we wanted to. And I just think that's really important.
Sounds like maybe it's finding the time. We've got new tools that are attractive to perhaps younger generation of readers, but it's finding the time, all the competing interests, so.
I think the digital, if you've got time for the digital thing like the Kindle there, now where would you store 2,500 books in your house?
From a practical standpoint, yes.
Yes, and so that makes you have an availability to have more reading material at your disposal.
At your disposal. Very good. All right. Well, despite the declining numbers, books do bring people together. Let's take a look.
Despite the statistics, book clubs, writing workshops, and the promotion of literature is getting plenty of publicity. One of the most popular book clubs, sponsored by Oprah, has generated great interest in and success for authors. In our region, many people gather around coffee tables and in libraries to visit about their favorite books. Online blogs and fan clubs are other venues for the discussion of common interests surrounding books. Writers workshops and writers groups inspire people to share their work and hone their skills. While reading or writing a book is often a solitary exercise, it often spurs great activity in sharing the results. If you are a member of a book club or have tried your hand at writing, join the conversation by calling 1-877-469-5767.
Now Carolyn, you are a member of the book club that is sponsored by the Mason City Public Library. Why did you decide to join the book club?
Because I wanted to read books that I might not read myself, and that was my main thrust. I knew that I would read books for pleasure, but I also knew that other people would have different ideas. And our book club does try to diversify. We try to read a classic, we will read a memoir, we will read a big variety. We try, and nonfiction, and always we read Iowa Reads. So we just try to get a big variety going, and people have different interests, and sometimes you wouldn't read that book if they didn't say, "Oh, we've got to read this. It's great."
And is it, did you know the people that you were becoming a member of the book club with, or were those new people that you met? Or is there any attraction to the social nature of the beast?
Well, we started out asking the library if, by any chance, they were thinking about starting a book club, and there were three of us that were really interested. We'd all, we were all teachers, we all retired, we all read. They did decide to do that, and the great part is the diversity of people. We meet right now in the afternoons, we're probably going to have an evening session also for people that work. But we have women or men, we have two men, and would like to have more because they have a different perspective on books than we do. But we have some women that are in their 30s and 40s, and they bring, again, their own ideas and from their own generation. And I find that reading a book together brings you together, and you, as you develop trust, you develop a community in your book club. And as you begin to trust each other, you not only are talking about the characters in the book and what's going on in the plot, but you're talking about yourselves and sharing experiences. And it's truly wonderful. It's really nice to meet these people that you would never have met otherwise.
And book clubs take all forms. Austin has kind of a citywide, I mean, that's huge. How does that work?
We do, we have a citywide read. It's called the Austin Page Turners, and it's an ad hoc group of people who have joined together to create this annual event. Anyone can participate. We choose a Minnesota author. It's always a Minnesota author. And once a year, we bring that author in to speak, and we, the library participates by having plenty of those books on hand. I'm not a member of the Page Turners myself. One of my staff members is. It's very successful. We have a great, great number of people who go out of their way to read that book. And I think we've had, you know, 200 or 300 people come to hear the speaker at different times. We do different other events with it, different book discussions that led by various Page Turners. It's quite the event. So this past year, we had William Kent Krueger come down. He was a Minnesota Book Award winner, a mystery writer. Sometimes I think of him as kind of a writer that appeals to both men and women, but we've had serious books, literary things, lighter authors.
Christine, is this something as a publisher that you try to encourage or support? You know, you guys are maybe sometimes the go-between between the author and folks that would love to have them come speak in a community. Or Cheryl, if you've ever been invited to be, to speak at a book club and kind of give your take on, I mean, this dynamic between the readers and the author seems to be one that's cultivated now.
We get many, many, many letters from kids wanting information about our authors, wanting to know where they can write our authors. It's a little different dynamic at Capstone with the authors. We have many authors who promote their books on their own, set up their own relationships with their local libraries to promote their books. At Capstone, we're really more of a liaison, you know, we can provide some information. We don't actively arrange appearances for our authors, though, but we do answer letters and help kids get in touch with them as best we can. It is a, it is a unique relationship between the author and the reader, and it's a, you know, kids just idolize their favorite authors, be it, you know, a Capstone book or any book. So we do try and facilitate that as best we can.
Now, I've never spoken at a library. I'd love to. But, yeah, when you talk about that relationship between the author and the reader, I was shocked by that when I, my book got out there, and I'm getting these emails, and people are saying all these wonderful things, and they're so into the characters. You know, it was, it was really neat to read the comments. It's a wonderful relationship. I would answer, if I, you know, ever get to that point where I'm inundated with emails, I'd answer every one of them because they're so much fun to read.
Are you ever surprised by what they see in your book that you may or may not have intended to be part of?
Definitely, definitely. They take a character and say, "Oh, I'm hoping you'll do this with her in the next book." And you're like, "I never thought of that. That would be interesting." So, yeah, they think ahead for you. It's kind of-
My wife read a comment one time, because she used to read a lot of books when she was able to, and that if you read a book, it's your imagination that you're picking, especially an affectionate book, you know, you are getting that, it's your imagination of what's going on there. If that book is made into a movie, somebody else's imagination is not exactly the same. So a lot of times, you can step into those characters and get away from your own life for a while, probably.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I never like to see the movie after I've read the book.
No, no. The character never looks right in the movie.
Well, it is kind of funny, like you say, that, you know, if you're reading a book and you picture a character a certain way, you know, and somebody else, like you're talking about the book clubs, and they discuss that, I would imagine it's everybody's imagination, everybody's perception of what that person looks like, or what kind of predicament they're in, or whatever. That would make good discussion.
If I could add one more thing. Aside from the library book club, I'm also a lifelong learner. Our community college has lifelong learning for us, but we have a lot of study groups, which is basically the same thing. The group is built around books, and one of them has been provocative literature. And I'm just thinking, the last book we were reading was just for fun, to have some adventure. And we read She, which is written in the late 1800s, maybe, and the character is "She Who Must Be Obedied." I can't tell you how many times we're going around as we see our book club members saying, "She Who Must Be Obedied." But, you know, all those things come out when you're in a book club.
I do want to remind our at-home audience that if you are a member of a book club and can share a story about what your book club is like, and how many people are in it, and where you meet, we'd love to hear your details as well. Be sure to call us at 1-877-469-5767. Now, there are social groups around reading books, but there are also social groups around writing books. And Roger, you mentioned a little bit about the club that you belong to, and Cheryl, I'm interested in if you collaborated with anyone as you were writing. You know, writing a book is kind of a solitary aff- anyone as you were writing. You know, writing a book is kind of a solitary affair, but yet it seems like people like to get together and talk about and get feedback on their books as they're writing them, or the pieces, whether it's poetry or short stories.
Well, in our writing group, now, as I've only been there for a short time, but it's probably similar to the book club, where you have people reading various things that they have written, and you interact with those people, and you get to be, you learn more about them, a little bit more about, you know, that's some personal stuff about them, their lives, and it's interesting, I guess, from my own perspective, I really learned to write better by listening to how those people would express their feelings, describe various things, and so I, I think it was a good learning experience for me, and I look forward to going every night that we're on. And we're looking for new members.
When I began writing my book, I didn't collaborate with anybody, but I wish I would have. I kind of did it backwards. I wrote the book, then I started getting involved in writing groups and associations, like Romance Writers of America, it's a very large group. I went to a conference, and that's where I figured out that all these writers get together and read chapters as they're writing, and the ones that do that stay interested in writing a lot longer, you know, they get unstuck because people give them feedback, and they, it's just, it's a great support group, because sometimes you kind of feel like, "Oh, I can't do this, I'm no good at this," and their friends help them through that. And the people that I met the first year at conference, none of them were published. They were just struggling writers, and all of them that had support that I could see from this Houston group, they're all published now, and doing quite well.
And do you have any suggestions, Christine, for, I mean, do you recommend that people participate in these groups? Do you want experienced writers? Do you ever take folks that have never been published before?
All of the above. Certainly, we seek out experienced writers, and I think writers improve by talking and creating and sharing with each other. We have published works from, you know, people who have never really written before, but probably have a background, be it a degree, say, a fine arts degree or something like that, or something in journalism, that we have worked with them before. So, certainly, we want our authors to be engaged in the writing process and engaged in the topic they're writing about, and it's probably the same when you're writing personally. If you're invested in what you're writing about, it interests you, then that's going to come across on the page. So, we try and match our authors by topic and by skill level, but, yeah, we're, we work with a variety of authors on skill and experience.
And in terms of the library's role for writers, what kind of resources, and we'll get to resources more in part three, but, but what do you see in terms of the needs of the writers when they come to you in the library?
Well, we, we are able to direct writers to groups to get started, you know, some of the kinds of things, that basic amount of information that they need when they first come in and have an idea for a book and want to get started. But also, libraries are a very typical place for writers' groups to meet and for people to get to know each other. They're very neutral, they're comfortable and free. So, we have two writers' groups, I think, that meet in Austin, and just use that space. So, that can be a great resource. And then I think that for the library, we certainly get a lot out of having writers work in our space. They're often willing volunteers, they work with our youth. We have one gentleman who's done some poetry workshops with some of our kids who are interested in that, so it's really a two-way street.
Very congenial bunch. You think of bookworms as having their nose in a book, but, but I think by the discussion, we can see that folks who are interested in books are interested in talking with others about books and being very social about it. I am interested in, in Roger, your goal as a writer. Kay had mentioned to me that you had some interest in writing a memoir.
Yes. Well, it's, for my own particular situation, I've been journaling for almost nine years. My wife was in a nursing home, and so I have originally started out, I wanted her to be able to understand what the rest of her family was going through, but that never materialized. And so I, for some reason, I kept on writing all this stuff down, journaling day after day, sometimes a lot, sometimes very little, and I got into, I seen in the Albert Lee paper that this Washington Avenue Writers Group was going to meet, and they met at the Christ Episcopal Church on Tuesdays, and I thought it'd be something fun to try, so I went there and met the people for the first time, and listened to how they wrote, and then I started doing some more of my own writing, and I talked to a friend of ours, and she said, "You should write a book." So, that's where it got started. And so I'm in the process of writing a memoir. It's, I'm sure it's going to be time-consuming, but I think it's something that'll be neat for my family, and maybe other people, too.
Sure, sure. And I think it's, we interviewed actually on the series last year, a gal who wrote her memoir, and a lot of people found common experiences. They grew up in the same era, or they have the same family situation, and I found that very inspiring, so. I'm interested in, in hearing more from you about why you enjoy connecting with others over books. What makes that fun? Why do we do it so much? Is it because Oprah tells us we should?
I think it's just fun to have a common ground, for one thing, and then discuss the book, because you each have different views, and there's different parts of it that, that you probably liked a lot, and people who are around you who haven't read the book don't get to be in the discussion, so.
I don't go to a book club, but I can see where it would be really unique, because you have a certain group of people, and like you were saying, they're probably fairly diverse, but they also have a commonality among them all, which is, they like to read, and now they can take a certain book, discuss that book, and everybody gets a different aspect than them. And one person might say that they've seen this particular thing in that book, another person say, "Hmm, I never thought about that." Yeah, I think you had mentioned that, too, that they have all different ways of receiving it and understanding it, and would give, able to give their opinion to somebody else. That's a neat social group, I mean, too, correct?
Yes, very much so. One of the books that we read a couple of years ago, the Iowa Reads book, was about Salk and his development of polio vaccine. And I'll tell you, when she passed that out, and we were determined, we were going to read Iowa Reads book no matter what, we all groaned and said, "Oh, look at, you look through it, all their statistics, oh, this is going to be awful." We came back, and it's probably one of the best discussions we've ever had, found out one of the people in our group had gone through, she, I mean, I knew her arm didn't work real well, but we didn't know it was because of polio. Her sister had died from polio, been in the iron lung. It ended up just being an amazing book that brought many, many stories out.
And Carolyn, help us with the mechanics a little bit. What kind of timeline do you have? Do you have to read the book within a week, within a month, within six months? What kind of parameters do you put on your book club for folks, so they can all participate in that discussion?
We, for one thing, the only things, as I said before, that we really have, we want to do a, we want to do a variety of books. In April or May, all of us, anybody that wants to submit a list of books that they've heard from somebody, they've read a review on, they just, maybe they've read the book, they like the author, whatever, we bring it to the meeting, and then Joyce, who is the person from the library who helps with the book club and gets everything going for us, presents the list, and then we decide before we quit for the summer, who wants to lead, and we, who, if you don't like to lead discussions, you don't have to do it, we have enough people, and if you don't mind, and there's always questions on the internet you can get, you know, so it's not cold, but we take a month that we want to do, and then we pick our book.
Okay, so you've got a month to read the book, and then somebody's in charge of kind of prompting the discussion when you guys get together.
And there is never a problem leading discussion.
Always something to talk about. All right. And as the library, if someone wants to start a book club, are you the place to come?
We can get you started with that, in kind of information. The Austin Public Library doesn't have a book club, but we have sponsored community education classes on starting a book club for people who've been interested in that. I think a couple guidelines are real important. When, when we have seen book clubs fail, sometimes they get started and they fizzle out. I think it's because people haven't agreed on the rules for how they're, how you're going to proceed, even simple things, like are you going to have food? Who's going to pay for the food? Do you get to bring a friend? What, do you get to come if you haven't read the book? The more that you kind of talk as a group about those kind of things upfront, I think the, the more successful your group is going to be, kind of knowing why you're there and what you're trying to get out of it.
All right, very good. Well, as you can see, there are a great many people in our region who are interested in reading and writing. Let's take a look at some of our regional resources.
Southern Minnesota and northern Iowa have many resources for book lovers, writers, and readers alike. Libraries, community education, universities, and publishers provide advice and services for developing the written word. In addition, there are many outlets for reviewing your favorite books, with many local authors in the mix. Call us to tell us about your favorite read at 1-877-469-5767.
We'd love to hear about your local resource and your favorite book, but first, we're going to talk about where you folks all found your resources, and for those folks that are in the communities in our area, where can they turn to, and, and you, you kind of started that in our last segment, and so let's continue that.
Sure.
You can go to your local public library, and, and lay out some of those rules. You talked about food, you talked about, can you come if you haven't read the book?
Right, right.
Why couldn't she come?
Everybody else has put in the time. No, I know one, I know one book club that they organize their book choices by the food that is discussed in the region, and they have a meal, and it's completely optional to have read the book. Those are the rules that that club has, has set up. So, just as long as everybody agrees about what is expected, I think that that's the main thing. But we have a lot of resources to help you choose books, too. There are great lists, and, and libraries are a great resource for getting enough copies of a book for people.
And Carolyn, you've been, you found yours also at the library, but are there other groups that meet in the home or around a particular topic? I've heard of cookbook clubs that meet, kind of to your food theme.
Well, Mason City, as I've talked to different people, has any number of book clubs. Besides the library one, which is going to expand because we keep having so many people, we want everybody to have a chance to talk, but I know several churches have book clubs centered around various themes. They may pick a book, or they may read just Christian authors, lifelong learning, I've mentioned. So, people interested in Thomas Paine can take that class, read the book, and discuss Thomas Paine. So, I think there are a lot of resources, certainly a lot of places to get books. The library has everything, plus they'll order for you if they don't happen to have it, put you on a waiting list if it's a new book.
Okay. And Roger, you mentioned for writers, you mentioned there is a group in Rochester.
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about, what are some of the resources, those of you involved in the writing piece? What, where can people turn to for advice and guidance and help as they look to write?
This was a, a person had put a letter to the editor in the Albert Lee paper, and was looking for people to, you know, to join the group, or to kind of be part of that whole group there, and it's Minnesota Writers Alliance. I don't know a whole lot about it, other than, once you get on the email list, they'll send you newsletters. I did contact one person with that group, because I was wondering if I should start this memoir or not, and so I gave her kind of a little short synopsis of what I had planned to do, and then she said, "Definitely, you should try and pursue it," and she even went so far as to say, "If you don't do it, I'm going to be angry with you," and I don't even know the person, you know.
A little motivation.
A little motivation, there you go. And so I did send her some other stuff, and she was willing to respond back and to help me. I'm going to actually work some more on it. I'm going to actually meet her face-to-face and have her give me some more input into what I need to do.
And I'm interested in those conferences, Cheryl. How did you hook up with kind of continuing it, or support institutions, organizations, professional memberships? Where did you turn to for advice after you penned out that first one?
Well, of course, the internet, where all the answers are. So, yeah, I went online and I just Googled and started doing some research, and that's where I found the, there's lots and lots of writer, writer groups and associations out there, and you just have to do a little research to find out which one fits you best. And Romance Writers of America was the one that I joined, and going to conference was a huge help, because you go to conference, you meet all the people, you take the classes, and from there, you learn where your additional valuable resources are. There's online writing shops, because, you know, you come together as writers, and you gather, and you go back to your little corners of the planet. So, it's nice to get online and communicate that way, and there's classes you can take online, and, and there's exercises you can do with other writers online. You can start a book, then they add a little bit to it, then another writer chimes in. So, there's unlimited resources out there. And of course, I love going to the bookstore. I didn't even realize, there's this whole section all about writing, so.
You can read a book about how to write books.
Yes, you can.
You know, as far as people who want to get published, I think the biggest thing is, you know, do a little research on, on publishers in general. Every publisher has certain guidelines that they're looking for with authors, and there is a wealth of publishers in Minnesota, several in, you know, Mankato alone, that publish children's books, but do a little homework then on the publisher. You know, for example, Capstone, we do not accept unsolicited work. So, if you're sending us a manuscript, or even we've gotten bound books before, that you've put your heart and soul into and are hoping for us just to publish it, you've, you've wasted a little time and effort. So, feel free to contact the publisher, find out what their guidelines are as far as working with authors for submissions. Capstone is always looking for new authors. We basically ask for resume and, and some unpublished writing samples. We want to really see what your, you know, skilled level is at that, you know, first glance work. So, do, do some work on your publisher and see if it's going to be a good fit for you, and if you can work within their system.
Because there are, as you mentioned, a lot of publishers that aren't Harper Collins, you know, you don't have to go with those big-name institutions. Give us a sense of how many smaller custom publishers might be in Minnesota, Iowa.
Oh, boy, I hate to venture a number. There, there are several, and, and you can, you know, do any, it depends on the type of publisher you're looking for. There's several just children's book publishers in the southern Minnesota area, you know, so that's definitely an outlet for you, but you need to find out what that publisher is going to require, because we each have our needs. And from, from my job, it's publishing children's book, and I have a specific focus for that book, and I want to work collaboratively with authors. I want to make sure that we're showcasing your skill level and your talent, but I also have a need for that book, be it reading level, being curriculum guideline, so we need to work together on that. And if that's something that you can do and partner with an editor and partner with a company like Capstone, it's a very rewarding relationship. We have several authors who have worked years and years for us, you know, and published many books for us. Again, it comes down to the creative part, and if you want a little more creative control over your work, that might not be the best fit for you. So, you have to kind of figure out what type of author you are, and then figure out what publisher best suits you.
Best fit, yep. So, ultimately, where do your books end up?
All over.
I'm thinking in the classroom.
They're in the classroom, they are in the public library, primarily, we are a school library publisher, so that is the bulk of it, but we do expand into the trade, you know, we go worldwide, so definitely we are, you know, you'll find us in museums. We're, we're expanding more and more.
And back to you, Anne, the public library is kind of a go-to for all things. If you had to be a resource for writers, we've already talked a little bit about book clubs, and you laid out some good rules to think about it.
Oh, yeah, libraries and rules, we're good on those. Probably the first resource that we head people towards is a series of books called the, we call them the market books, you know, writer's market, poet's market, there's a nonfiction market, a playwright's market, and they're books about how to get yourself published, and they sort of do some of that basic footwork for you. They are just a directory, essentially, of various publishers with the most up-to-date information that they have on some of the basic requirements, how publishers prefer to be contacted, but then, of course, you know, times change, and those things might change, you need to then follow up on that information and verify that. But that can be a good first step, and all of those books have good introductory chapters for how to begin your work, lots and lots of nonfiction books. Publishers are interested in first seeing your idea, you know, they don't want to see a final product.
They want to see that query first, don't they?
They want to just see that idea.
Right. Yep. And, and as we talk, you know, we're talking primarily about books, but for the writers in the audience today, this holds true if you want to submit an article for today, this holds true if you want to submit an article for a magazine, or a short story for a compilation, you know, as opposed to authoring, you know, a whole front-to-back like Cheryl has done, so I'm assuming you have those resources as well, where you send, how many pages they want, in what format?
Absolutely, and for other kinds of media, too, art, or photography, it kind of extends into those areas, too.
All those pieces, lots of things that we can do with books. Well, one of my favorite things that I was hoping we could do today was to have you share a favorite book of yours, either what you're reading this summer, or a favorite one that you have read that you recommend to all of your friends, and we want to hear a little bit about what the plot line is about, and why you recommend it, what you found that was so intriguing, so attractive about it. So who would like to go first?
I'll start.
Okay.
Okay, I have to admit it, I'm a Twiliter. I've read the whole series, and the reason that I like it, it's a good story, it's a love story, it's got, you know, the vampire, the fantasy, it's got action in it. I couldn't predict things, which I love it when I can't predict what's going to happen in a book, and then the other interesting thing is just the mania around it, and how it went from a book to this media movie frenzy, and how it's changed so many lives, the lives of these, you know, no-name actors that are now big names, and Stephanie Meyer, the author, so it was just fun to read it and then watch what happens afterwards.
The explosion.
The explosion, and it was a big explosion, so that's what I read this summer, and then one thing that I like to do for recommending to my friends, because they're, my friends are in that 18 to 49, 45 demo that's not reading as much, and a lot of my friends are young mothers, so they don't have time to read, so lots of times, people ask me for recommendations on books, because they know I have lots of them, and I recommend for my young mothers to read really short books, because that's what you have time for, when you have young children around, so I recommend Mitch Albom books for those women that don't read a lot, but want a good, short, kind of short story to read.
Great, excellent. Who's next?
Well, I'm very partial to nonfiction, it's what I do, and it's what I've always enjoyed, and right now, I'm reading a biography of Abraham Lincoln by David Donald, and what makes this one kind of different from the others is they've been able to use some of Lincoln's personal papers, so you get actual writings and more, you know, personal view of, you know, our president, who we think we all know, but it's a very engaging read for nonfiction, so I read all day, and when I do come home at night, I do try and read at least some of that, you know, as long as my eyes hold out. My very favorite book, and is probably a little cliche, is Gone With The Wind. I give that as gifts to nieces, I had my daughter read it against much protest, and then it became one of her favorites, too, so I think there's great merit in revisiting classics, and I will read that maybe once a year, just for sheer pleasure.
Just for fun. All right, how about you, Ann?
Well, I'm reading Alice Sebold's new book called Almost Moon, and the first line starts out with, you know, killing my mother was easier than I thought, so it goes on from there. But she wrote the lovely bones, and so I expect that this will be another bestseller for her, and my favorite books are usually very introspective, where the author spends a lot of time thinking, more than interacting with the rest of the world, and my favorite author is Ian McEwan, and my favorite book is Saturday, which has 24 hours in his life, so.
All right, very good. Roger, how about you?
Well, I'm probably from another group of, I also don't read very much, as far as books are concerned, but I do like to read letters to the editor in the paper, and I've actually written a fair amount of letters to the editor on subjects that I were close and dear to my heart. There was a big controversy here a while ago, I think there was English students in Albert Lee who were writing letters to the editor, probably as a requirement for English class, and one girl in school wrote about people driving, and how she was, these older people who are driving too slow, and so I commented on that, not negatively, but, you know, positively, and then also had my take on how people drive, how they fail to stop for stop signs, or don't signal, or, you know, various things like that. But I like reading letters to the editor, and then sometimes I read certain articles, Garrison Keillor, I like him, seen him in person. There's another lady that writes for the Albert Lee Tribune, and she always has some pretty neat stuff to write about, so that's what I do.
All right, sounds good. Carolyn, your favorite book?
How much time do you have?
I have about 60 seconds.
Well, I just want to put a plug in for Albert Lee, because I did read Blue Zone last year, and also heard the author, and it's pretty exciting to find out that Albert Lee is in the study for Blue Zone, but aside from that, I love Anita Shreve, and part of the reason is, is what you were talking about with Lovely Bones. She really, I think, all her books develop her characters, and you know what you're thinking, and there's action and there's plot, and the other part of that is, you never know, you cannot predict her books, or what her ending is can be, and when I get to the end of a book, and I'm still thinking about it, I just read her newest one, which is A Change Of Altitude, I'm still thinking about the ending, and that's got to be a good book for me.
All right, very good. Excellent selections, all of you. Now we have our reading list for the summer, very good. Well, we certainly have learned a great deal about the many options available to us in the region, as well as wonderful book suggestions for the summer. Here at KSMQ, we always encourage our audience to be active viewers, and I encourage you to visit our website, ksmq.org, to find links to the various organizations and programs, or libraries and things that we've discussed here tonight. Our panelists will be sharing some additional thoughts on our KSMQ blog, so if you would like to be part of that discussion, log on to blog.ksmq.org and share your thoughts as well. We appreciate everyone's participation here tonight. Thanks to you all, our panelists, and our viewers, and I wish all of you good reading this summer. Tune in next week when Cities on the Move visits St. Charles, Minnesota. We meet Laura Kirby, who preserves the memory of world-renowned gladiola breeder Carl Fisher, and is active in promoting the Gladiola Day Festival each year. St. Charles is also gateway to Whitewater State Park, and finally, we visit with city administrator Nick Culverman and his park and rec director Rick Schaber, to learn about the development of a new dog park in town. That's Tuesday, July 6th, at 6:30 PM on KSMQ. Thanks for joining us, good night.